Can rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation indivisible, perceived in justice.
All right, welcome everybody to our school board business meeting. Brittany will be joining us for the first half online remotely, so she is connected and dialed in. And I will take a motion to excuse Mike tonight, he will not be with us. So if someone can make a motion to excuse him.
Yeah, I'm going to excuse, can I get hurt? Yeah, I'm going to excuse Mike Connor.
Perfect, thank you. Patty will do the roll call vote, please.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, so we will jump right in. So first up is special recognition for certificated employees, Dr. Pierce.
Great, thank you. Yes, so it's Certificated Employees Month, and so this is our opportunity to recognize teachers and all our certificated staff here in the district. So in terms of teaching staff, this is the data from 2324. We have 1,147 teachers in our classroom, in our classrooms, in our district, with an average experience of 13.2 years. So that's some data that we had shared at a staff update. I'm echoing. Okay, I'm going to keep going. I think, I think they got it fixed. So certificated staff members are our teachers, of course, and also our counselors, specialists, librarians, substitutes, nurses, and administrators. So we have a tradition here in Kennewick of delivering cakes out to the buildings during Certificated Staff Appreciation Month. And we know that our building teams and PTOs and different partnership groups also do a lot to recognize our staff members. I, I'm going to steal a little bit of Matt's thunder because he's going to highlight some of this information in a presentation later on in the meeting. But I did want to highlight two pieces of data from our annual student survey because we asked the question, there's at least one teacher or other adult at my school that I can talk to if I have a problem. And you can see from our Spring 2025 results, 89% of our students, and these are students in grades three through 12, agree or strongly agree with that. And of course, you know, we strive for 100%, and we're really proud of that 89% number. And 91% of our students say that the adults at their school respect them. Again, proud of those results and, and proud of our team here in KSD. I know this is a little difficult to read, but I'm also going to steal a little bit of Alyssa's thunder because she's going to highlight this in a presentation later. But just last week, we received notification from Washington State that they had selected the 2023-2024 schools for the Washington School Recognition Program. And they asked us to keep it kind of sequestered until May 6th so they could align the announcement with National Teacher Day and Certificated Staff Week. So we have the following schools that are being recognized. Amistad Elementary School for Closing Gaps, Cottonwood Elementary for Achievement, Endeavor High School for Growth, Southgate Elementary School for Closing Gaps, Vista Elementary School for Growth, and Westgate Elementary School for Growth. So this is based on, of course, the work that our hardworking teachers and staff do with students every day. This year, or for this, this year, 16% of schools in Washington received this distinction. So not, not very many. 160, excuse me, 154 school districts of the 295 across the state are being honored, and 406 schools. So we're really proud of our schools and our staffs who are honored for the academic outcomes that they're getting for students. So I wanted to highlight that. And then our communications team put together a, a great little video. If you want to know about our teachers, I think the best people to ask, right, are our students. So we'll take a look at the video.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler, for teaching those chess.
And also, Mrs. Buckingham was also helping us.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. She changed my life. She is the best teacher for this program. I don't see anybody else doing it better.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, for being the best teacher at MCP.
Thank you, guys. I love you because you love me.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler, and thank you, Ms. Buckingham. Without Ms. Buckingham, I wouldn't be able to do this. And without Ms. Tyler, I probably wouldn't be able to do chess.
Mr. Met, he teaches math here at Kennewick High School, and he got me through pre-calc, which is a pretty challenging class.
Thank you, Ms. Summers, Ms. Zerba, Ms. Royce, Ms. Ledford.
They're all willing to help whenever I need help, and they're always there for me.
Shout out to Mrs. Whorica because she's a great teacher.
I took early childhood education at Tri-Tech. My teachers, Ms. Blaisdell and Mrs. Shepherd, really were huge supporters and kind of helped me start believing in myself a little bit more.
Somebody that has really impacted my life is definitely Julie Mackincurf at Endeavor High School. She definitely welcomed me with open arms, was so eager to help me and hear my story and work with me on anything that I needed, very flexible. Without her, it would have been very challenging.
I just want to be, you know, helping kids out like how my teachers helped me out is really important to me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, teachers.
Of course, we want to thank all our staff. And then I, I have just a couple individuals I wanted to, to highlight because every once in a while, I just get an unsolicited thank you email from a, a community member, or a parent, or a student highlighting a teacher. And I happened to get two this week, so I wanted to share those two. So special shout out to Tim at, at Southridge High School. He used to be at Kamaiken High School. But a parent reached out to me to share that both, she saw this post on social media of a student saying that Mr. Bissin was one of her favorite teachers and why. And so she shared, she saw this on social media, and she shared, "Both my children had the privilege of being taught and coached by Tim during their time at Kamaiken, and he made a profound, a profound difference in their lives." This post is just one example of how former students continue to recognize and appreciate the positive influence he had on them. While I know we are fortunate to have many outstanding educators in our district, which is true, Tim truly stands out. I just wanted to make sure you are aware of the meaningful and lasting impact he's had on so many students. Thank you for taking the time to read my message. So that was one email I received this week. And I received another email recognizing Maggie, and I'm not 100% sure how to say Maggie's last name, Fealgie maybe, and Chuck Hammaker Teals at, at Southridge High School. So again, this is from a parent who emailed, and she said, "I wanted to express my gratitude for the amazing care and compassion shown today by Coaches Maggie and Chuck. During the trip to Walla Walla, her son experienced a sudden and severe allergic reaction to something he ate, something they had no idea he was allergic to, and he went into anaphylactic shock." She said, "In what could have been a terrifying and crazy situation, Maggie and Chuck responded with calm and quick care. Maggie called me immediately to let me know what was happening, and Chuck stayed right by my, her son's side. He was transported to the hospital, staying, and they stayed in close communication with me." She said, "They took care of my son as if he were their own. What happened today went far beyond what is needed of coaches. They were truly our heroes today. I just needed you to know what phenomenal people you have working for you at Southridge High School. We're so grateful that they were there for my son in such a critical moment." So just like, it's, you know, every day, and these kinds of things happen, I think, every day in all of our schools. And every once in a while, you know, people reach out and share that. And so I wanted to share these two stories tonight as part of our appreciation. And then finally, one other shout out. I had the great pleasure earlier this week of going out to Lincoln Elementary to recognize music teacher Havlin Gilbert, who received a Country Music Association Foundation Teacher of Excellence Award. So this is, there's Havlin there, right there in the middle, oops. And the team, the, the staff there at Lincoln, helping to celebrate his, his award. The award comes with a $5,000 award for his own professional growth, and then also for his classroom, to support his classroom program. So again, just great things happen in our schools every single day. So I would like to pause at this point and just ask us all to give a big round of applause to our certificated staff. And since we have a crowd, and so before I get to another special recognition, if you are a KSD certificated staff member, could you, and you're here tonight, will you stand up? And there's a bunch of us, certificated staff member, come on. Thank you. Okay, so one other real special recognition we, we have tonight, and that's to recognize Dr. Ramah Devagupta because she received a Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. And I was able to share just real briefly about this a little bit earlier in the year when she had received the award, but she wasn't able to come to the board meeting at that time to be recognized. So Dr. Devagupta is here tonight, so thank you, yes. I would like you to just stand there for a moment while I say a few things about this award and about you, okay? All right, so each year through the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Teach, and Science Teaching, the President of the United States recognizes outstanding educators from across the country who teach science, technology, engineering, or math, STEM, at either an elementary or secondary grade level. Recipients of the award demonstrate deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students' success. The program was established by Congress in 1983, and only up to 110 outstanding educators from across the entire nation are recognized with this award each year. The application requires a reflective narrative, a 30-minute video from the classroom, letters of recommendation, and supplemental information about the teacher and their classroom. Each application is evaluated using the following five dimensions of outstanding teaching. Mastery of content appropriate for the grade level, use of effective instructional approaches that are appropriate for students in the classroom and that support student learning, effective use of student assessments to evaluate, monitor, and improve student learning, reflective practice and lifelong learning to improve teaching and student learning, and opportunity access and leadership and education inside and outside the classroom. I can attest personally, and I know Ms. Gledhill's been, I believe, in, in Dr. Devagupta's classroom as well, co-teaching, and so I've seen, I've seen her in action. I've seen this to be very true. Each Presidential Awardee receives a certificate signed by the President of the United States, a $10,000 award from National Science Foundation, and an all-expenses-paid trip for an awards ceremony. In addition, awardees join a national cohort of award-winning teachers providing opportunities to impact teaching on a state and national scale. The recognition events can include professional development opportunities, discussions with policymakers on how to improve STEM education. And I can tell you that Dr. Devagupta is a lifelong learner, and all of these opportunities that she's going to have by receiving this award are really going to benefit our students here in KSD. So we are proud to call Dr. Devagupta one of our own here in Kennewick, and we are happy to extend our heartfelt congratulations for her, to her, for this prestigious award. And Dr. Devagupta has the banner, right, that she was, and I'm not sure if you have family members here with you that you would like to introduce? And then have you, we'll have you bring up the banner and get some pictures with the board.
Dr. Pierce, I just want to take this moment to thank everybody and, you know, come and pursue your tolerance, gratitude. I'm very, very grateful to my, and also, you know, hugged me when I joined Kennewick, so this way I can share the wisdom and insight. My son, Strayam, is here. My husband and daughter, not here today. Ashanti, my sister, and soul sister, and Charles, and so many more. And of course, Mrs. Stillett was the principal at Highlands when I joined Kennewick School District, and Rob, another brother, everybody, everybody. So I really feel very grateful, and I just want to say that even though my name is here, it's really a celebration. It's none of us been working a vacuum. And every student, every parent, every community member, everybody has taught me some. Very, very grateful. Thank you.
Oh, great. Perfect, yes. Of course, yes. Hmm? Oh, I'll get, I'll get it.
What a way to start the meeting with some of that fantastic recognition. So we, we truly appreciate all our staff, but thank you for your cake. Next up is communications from parents, staff, and district residents. Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communications from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved for the working meeting, in the working meeting, for the board to listen to comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided, as the goal is to listen and learn. Please know the board silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with speaker remarks. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, please remember your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. So the guidelines for addressing the board. So when your name is called, you come up to the podium. You'll have two minutes to address the board. A stoplight on the screen will let you know when to begin, one minute remaining, and when to stop. We appreciate you being here tonight, and we will get started. First, do we have any online commenters? We do not, so we will jump right in. So the first speaker is Lauren Lusk.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lauren Lusk. I'm a senior at Kamaiken High School, where I reside as the Drama Club president. I've been involved in the Drama Club for four years, and I've taken all Drama classes off. And I'm here to ask that we do not remove the Drama 1 and 2 class and the Drama 3. I am accompanied by some of my peers who would also like to see these classes stay. To begin, there are many students at Kamaiken High and many students that are currently in these classes that are not able to do extracurriculars for various reasons. Therefore, the Drama class is their only opportunity to largely contribute to the Drama Club. Additionally, I've heard many comments that the Drama class is their favorite class. It was mine as a student that was in the class. In Drama class, we learn and experiment with improvisation. And with improvisation, we learn how to adapt to unforeseen circumstances. Additionally, we use improvisation to communicate with other people in real life. As our generation has been impacted socially by COVID, this is a great way to build back up those social skills. Additionally, you learn empathy by playing characters that you may not relate to at all, characters that you may not even like, but you have to understand why they do the things they do. The Drama class teaches skills that are applicable to all careers. Not only do we learn performing, we learn technical skills, such as how to build a set, how to direct a team, how to work collaboratively. Without Drama class, we limit the potential of students in our Drama Council. We limit the potential of our productions, and we simply limit the potential of students at Kamaiken. So we ask that you, you keep our Drama classes because our Drama classes foster good people who are prepared and confident to take on the real world. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Next up, Lily DeLeone.
Hello, my name is Lily DeLeone. I'm a sophomore at Kamaiken High School, and I've been taking this class. And I want to, first of all, thank you guys for everything that you have done to support the arts in the schools. We thank you so much. Your impact is amazing. I've been doing Drama for much longer time than just at Kamaiken, and I have never learned so much more about Drama, but about life as well, than in this Drama class that I have taken. I have grown so much as a person, as an actress, as a director, as a manager, and I have seen others grow as well. I have seen students who I'd never heard speak at the beginning of class to being amazing actors and actresses, to directing, to being creative and managing lights and sets. And it's absolutely amazing to see these people come out of their shell and grow. Drama teaches practical, practical skills, as my colleague Lauren mentioned. But also, biggest thing that I have learned from Drama is problem solving. Having to respond to things in the moment backstage, onstage, in improv is something that I carry with me throughout every day of my life. Something that I think about every single day of my life. Something that is a personal mantra to me, something very important to me. And I full-heartedly believe that other students see it as the same as I do. This class is incredibly beneficial for students, but also growth, it benefits the whole school. Using this class to grow our Drama Club brings in funds from the shows that we do. And I believe that in the past years that we have had Drama, our Drama has grown and shown that we can produce good quality shows that bring in funds to help us. Students from all sorts of different backgrounds have spoken to me, have talked about how much they love Drama, how much it helps them. I have seen and experienced the changes that these people go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Next up, Randy, did you want to go now, or did we want to move? Okay. Randy Willis, you are up, sir.
Don't start my clock yet. I, I feel a little bit small after Dr. Feel a little bit small after Dr. Devagupta receives her recognition award, and those two young ladies, but I'll do my best. Our, our future is well in hand. My name is Randy Willis. I'm not a certificated teacher, but I was a coach. And I'll say my classroom was the swimming pool over the last 40 years here in the Kennewick and Richland School Districts. Forty years ago this month, I attended the school board meeting, presented reasons why I hoped the Kennewick School District would consider, consider adding high school girls swimming. In 1994, I presented to the Richland School Board. Richland subsequently added girls swimming in 1994. And then in 2005, on our third attempt to get boys started in Richland, the Richland School Board approved that. It was a different school board than we previously spoke to, and it was a different superintendent. There were both people involved who had an entirely different take. They were not afraid of Title IX. They said, "If we want to do something, we'll find a way to do it," and they did support it. After 28 seasons in the tri-cities as a high school coach, and six in Hawaii, what I can tell you about swimming is that 75% of those kids who turn out and compete are not club swimmers. A good number of those are kids who, swimming, as they turned out, was their only sport they ever attempted in high school because other sports just didn't fit. This is about opportunity, and I, I challenge us all, if we can find a way to do something, to provide an opportunity. Because if we build it, they will come. We have, we have a way to get things done, if you want it. Kids want to belong and be part of something. They want to be on a team, and some of their most important memories after they leave high school later years are team trips on a travel bus or events and so forth, that competition. Every athlete in swimming competes every week. No one sits on the bench, no one sits on the sideline and watches. I appreciate the time to speak. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Next up, is it Leila, Leila Ray? What, what's your last name? Sorry. Oh, okay. All right. You're up. Thank you.
My name is Leila Ray Gloria Navarrete. I am a senior at Kamaiken High School and also in my second year at Tri-Tech Skill Center with the Early Childhood Education Program. I'm here to advocate to bring back the Kamaiken Drama Classes 1, 2, and 3, 4. My freshman and sophomore year, I took those classes with my colleague Lauren Lusk, and I've had the honor of working with Kamaiken Drama Department all four years throughout high school. I want to highlight the importance of social-emotional development that comes with Drama and theatrical programs. We see social-emotional curriculums implemented all the way at the preschool age. Here at Ecap Head Start, our Tri-Tech preschool has second-step curriculum that promotes this. This goes on further throughout elementary, middle school, and high school levels. Theater arts promotes and supports real-life examples of this. We lead, sorry, those were my notes. After COVID, a lot of high schoolers going in now have missed out on an important step of their social-emotional development through the use of middle school and secondary curriculums. When we have theater arts, we promote cognitive development. We work hand-in-hand with the English department when looking at curriculums for Romeo and Juliet, Julius Caesar, The Crucible. With Kamaiken, we are able to use our productions of Romeo and Juliet to not only just expand upon their development from the freshman curriculum. Many of them are going through a new change that they might not have a lot of experience with. We are able to promote this, and the theater class is able to give them skills that will help them throughout the clubs, such as stage combat skills in a safe and repeatable and consenting manner. So I please, I advocate to bring back this class, to continue to have this class, not just at Kamaiken, but also at all, all the high schools and middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that actually looks like the last speaker for the, regarding Drama. So can you look into this for us and report back next meeting, please?
Yes, okay. I absolutely will, yes. I'm going to follow up with the team, and we will provide a follow-up to the board and then follow up at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next up, Jason Hart.
Hey, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Good, good. My name's Jason Hart. I'm the head coach of Swimming and Diving Girls at Southridge High School. And it's my 19th year with the KSD. My first year was actually 1986. I've left a couple times. I've sent several emails about advocating. I've sent several emails about advocating to add boys swim to the Kennewick School District. I did this in coming from other schools and knowing that really the last school district in Eastern Washington that has big schools at this point is us. Spokane literally is adding swimming in all their schools this year. So, I'm kind of pivoting like you guys were talking about in drama right now because I was hoping to go behind Randy, but Randy is an icon in this community, and he took the time to come down here. He is, he's an owner of the Columbia Basin Racket Club. He lives part-time in Hawaii, and first thing he did is come to town and call me and be like, hey, I want to talk to some people. How swimming, you know, how it affects these boys that I've worked with in Pasco or Chihuahua or up in Moses Lake or Lake City is life-changing, man, you know? And, you know, we talked a little bit about social-emotional type stuff, you know, and I just, I watch it just lift people up, you know? And all sports are special. Swimming's special in my mind is, one, we all need to be safe in the water, and, two, I'm a big guy. I can go to the gym right now and go swim a workout. I can't, can't play basketball. I mean, it'd destroy my knees. You know what I'm saying? This is something that we can teach our kids as a lifelong journey. I also asked Brittany Burrell to be here as well. She's going to be speaking in a little bit. And she owns, I might get this wrong, Brittany, I'm sorry, she owns Rapid Aquatics TC. And she is so passionate about the sport, she decided to come out here and speak to you too because we think that the boys of our school district deserve this opportunity that our girls have received because honestly Randy got it going, and that's real. I'm nothing, I'm here to help. I'm here to help with questions. I know high school swimming. I mean, you know, and I'm just excited to work with you all, and thank you so much for the communication and the email. It was super respectful. And, you know, let's go Kennewick, man, you know? All right? Thank you.
Great. Yeah. Thanks, Jason. All righty. Next up, Tanya Beard.
Hi.
Hello.
It's nice to meet you in person. Okay, I'll wait for the green light. But when you were, in 1994, I was graduating from high school in Wyoming. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to read because I wrote a lot of words and I compressed them, so I'm smiling at you all now, and I'm going to look down. Okay, I did grow up in Wyoming. I've come very far in my almost 50 years. I've lived in this community since 2019, not Kennewick but Richland, but I do volunteer. I come here and work with you guys for free. I've worked with vulnerable children and families in medical and school settings since 1998. I'm here today on behalf of, not to speak for, but on behalf of transgender students in the district and their families. Everything they said about sports is true for transgender kids too. I'm going to get to the overlap here in a minute. There's conflict, right? Thank you for the communication over the last few weeks. I sent you guys a 12-page letter, so thank you for that, for receiving that. Technicalities matter, language and words matter, interpretation matters, relationships matter, but the law, you guys know this, is not emotional, and it's not contextual, and the rights of students are very, very clear. While this is about gender, more so, it's really about boundaries. Language is a way to kind of bypass the real issue here, which is that I would suggest that while we could make it about gender and identity and pronouns, those are always the transgender exclusionary policies, even if not intentional, right? Is it intentional? Sometimes, sometimes not. They bypass the reality, which is that students' boundaries are being disregarded because they're poorly understood, despite the fact that transgender people exist within every single category of people. Transgender people are not wearing gender as a costume. I've heard a lot of this lately. It's not only what they want to be or how they identify, it's literally just who they are. So dismissing trans girls as men reduces them to a stereotype. It also imbues their existence with this icky, bad faith prejudice, makes them into a threat instead of a teammate, and these students already have so much stacked against them. Title IX, it was created to protect against sex-based discrimination, to ensure equity and access. It does not have to do with fairness. That doesn't mean I don't think fairness is important, but when we take something that was, you know, misapplying it against a vulnerable population, there's a conflict. It was to protect and promote inclusion, and now it's being used to promote exclusion because the time is done. I mean, respectful, but I left a copy because these things kind of go in one ear and out the other. So, who do I leave those with?
Patty, please, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Next up, Brittany Burrell.
Okay. I too am a little long-winded, so I'm going to read to keep me on track. My name is Brittany Burrell, and I'm the owner of Rapid Aquatics TC, as well as former aquatic manager for the city of Pasco for over 10 years. As I could stand before you today and speak to the value of swimming from a coaching perspective, I believe there are many coaches in my room, to my senior, whom could fill in those blanks for you. What I'd like to bring to your attention is a more personal lesson that is a perspective of a student athlete. During my high school years, I was well-known as a softball player, a member of a team sport. Through this experience, I learned to compete for my position, be a good teammate to others, and that a whole team can lift the weight that was needed regardless of a single player was having a bad day. As a senior in high school, due to generic sagas of teenage students in which they go through of bullying and peer pressure, I found myself being a student who went from being a class president and an athlete, a happy kid, to all of a sudden failing classes, skipping school, and isolating myself from anyone who'd even notice if I woke up the next day or killed myself. From my stronghold during these struggles of my mental health, I kept a job at the Tri-City Court Club where I could go before school and sit mindlessly in front of a pool and watch well-equipped swimmers be a part of what they called a master swim program. After many weeks of watching this cheery-voiced guy, he finally came over and introduced himself, and he said, "It's a lot more fun in the pool than outside." I will never forget my first practice. I was full of defeat. That same voice came to me and said, "I heard you're only a senior in high school. Well, let me teach you something, kid. It's not that you start, it's how you finish and that you finish." These words resonated with me deeper than swimming, and I looked at what was going on with my life, and I realized that coach didn't invite me that day because of my athleticism, but because he saw a kid that needed guidance, that needed to be taught that great things were achievable, one small accountability move at a time, and simply showing up. That coach was Jason Hart. Through his passion, I learned a lesson that a solid team sport had never taught me, and that was to show up to myself. In team sports, we push athletes to show up for one another, but individualized team sports like swimming are helping athletes set reasonable expectations for themselves that do not have to be judged amongst a standard of level of play that high school students try out for in other sports. If it's not how you start but that you finish, I believe as coaches, educators, and adults, it is our responsibility to be mentally aware of the individual personal gains that students learn through sports like swimming. For the sake of the mental health and growth of our young male athletes, I believe a positive influence sport like swimming is something we should all stand for. I stand as living proof that this style of athleticism helps our youth finish strong. Please see the difference that programs like men's swimming can make in your school districts today. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Last up, we have, actually before the last one, you, that's the last swimming comment, so can we look into that?
Absolutely, yes. In process.
Get a record next meeting?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Lisa Pepperd.
Trying to throw me off. Some people are hard to hear. That was a little close, sorry. I appreciate the board's interest in transparency, and I am looking for more, especially as we are entering election season. When board members go on TV or record interviews or go on podcasts, I think it is insufficient to simply say that you're not representing the board when you're discussing board business, positions, and opinions, and it is unreasonable to expect people to separate what you say from your job as a school board director. Additionally, when you say you're part of a coalition of conservative school boards around the state, I would like to know which ones. Members of Moms for Liberty have been here to rally around every anti-inclusive agenda this board has put forth. When members of that group come to meetings to thank you for the work you do, I would like to know what your relationship is to it. Moms for Liberty has been labeled an extremist group by the Southern Poverty Law Center. Nationally, their stance is, quote, "anti-government and conspiracy propagandist, anti-LGBTQ, and anti-gender identity," end quote. This is no surprise based on the views of some people here. Additionally, quote, "throughout its existence, Moms for Liberty has also waged war on teachers' unions, referring to them as terrorist organizations, and criticizing their stances and influence in public schools," end quote. The voting public, community members, and KSD staff should know about your involvement, if any, with these and any other organizations. At the last meeting during the discussion of transgender athletes, Gabe said he wanted to say one more thing about it and then be done, yet here we are with more resolutions about the topic. I don't claim to have answers to what is clearly a divisive issue, and I agree that student athletes should be kept safe, but statements we keep hearing about this are bizarre and unfounded and show intolerance and lack of interest in nuanced discussion. Anti-diversity, anti-equity, and anti-inclusion mean uniformity, inequity, and exclusion, and I do not support it.
That was our last public comment for the evening, so we appreciate those. We'll take a quick second. Brittany is able to join us now, so. Thank you, yeah. Again, thank you, everybody who spoke today. We do appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is the consent items. I will take a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. So, we have a motion to approve the consent items. Patty, if you can do the roll call vote, please.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is communications follow-up. Dr. Pierce.
Yes, thank you. I do have something from the last meeting to follow up on. So, at our last meeting, some student, a student came and voiced concerns about AP course offerings and a desire for an internship program at Southridge High School. So, after the meeting, I spoke with Southridge High School Principal John Griffith, and he shared that Southridge does not have fewer AP offerings than in the past. They've actually been expanding both AP and honors offerings and enrollment. Next year, they'll have the same number of AP course offerings as this year, but based on student registration, they'll be adding a section of AP history and adding a new offering of AP statistics. So, they build their schedule based on student signups, and they don't have enough student interest in AP government or in AP biology to run these courses next year. They had three students sign up for AP government and eight students sign up for AP biology. So, John and his counselors are working with students to find alternatives for the students, the 11 students who are, who signed up for those courses that won't run. And then in future years, he's looking to do what others, some of our other schools have done, and they essentially set up a rotation or offset of AP offerings, so there's a pathway for students. So, students know that some classes are offered some years and some classes are offered other years, so they can schedule their course-taking in a manner that they don't miss any AP offerings, and so they're running offset years, if that makes sense. So, I think that's a good approach, and it's an approach that's worked in some of our other schools as well. In terms of the internship program, John shared that he has met with the CEO of Trios, so that, I think the student mentioned Cadlec. He's about the CEO of Trios because that's the hospital right across the street from Southridge, to see if an internship program could be started. Also, Abby Mattson, who's our Director of College and Career Readiness, she shared that she's also reached out multiple times, as well as Debbie Smith, who's our workforce specialist. So, they're trying to make some connections. So, you know, it's just sometimes difficult to get, to get things off the ground. It takes, you know, a willingness and capacity on both the side of the district and the agency that we're working with. So, they're trying to make some connections and move that work forward. They, Debbie shared that she has made some connections with Cadlec around potential internships, job shadowing, volunteering. Again, I shared kind of a more in-depth update with the board in my communication with you, but they are working to establish those relationships and get in, so some things in the works for the internship programs.
That would be great, Jersey, particularly with Cadlec, as they are my employer. I know a lot of the people involved in the organization there, if you need help with that.
Great.
I'd be happy to reach out and help.
Thank you.
Real quick with the AP classes, is there interest enough in AP government and biology at the other high schools to formulate? Have we ever bussed or shuffled kids from one school to another that need or want to take those classes?
We bust students from middle to high school to access the higher-level course that isn't offered at the middle school. From high school to high school, I don't think we, we can't, we don't have the means to provide the transportation, but a student could potentially get dual-enrolled. You know, they would, it's just a matter of, does it all work with if it's, if it's second period at the other school, you know, how to, and the travel time part of it. So, we'll, you know, we'll follow up with John and see if they're able to find some solutions for the students that are currently impacted.
Could we do a remote, could we do a remote learning where, for example, they would have access most of the time to, through, you know, Zoom, or whether the students would interact in the classroom? I just.
Yeah, we've pursued some of that.
See if it's possible.
So, I can kind of follow up with you on that too, but, yeah, we haven't been able to make that happen. But we're open to creative and outside-the-box thinking, and that's what we're, that we try to do as well. So, yeah.
I just, yeah.
And the online curriculum that we just approved two weeks ago had a number of AP offerings.
Yeah, so it would, we would have to, I mean, and that's, I can't remember, I'd have to double-check with Alyssa if, like, they could get dual-enrolled, right, then in Endeavor and current school and take it online. That's another thing we'll follow up on and look into.
And in that case, could they take like a study hall or something, you know, something comparable, have the class where they're just going to do it online during a certain hour of the day? Is that how they potentially could do that?
Yeah, they might be able to take it from the library or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll see what we can do. But the pathway idea is really, I think, a good one. It's just a matter, and so students know, this is what you take and.
Just needs to be well-publicized.
I was also thinking until the pathway is established for those kids.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
That identify that they wanted to take it already.
But it sounds like it's not, there's less, it might just be the misconception that a couple of the classes aren't being offered because we didn't have enough interest. So, it really isn't that.
That's correct. That is correct. So, they're actually having more.
Misconception, then, okay.
Great. We will move on then to our reports. We will start with Annie.
I did not have the pleasure of attending the meeting today, so Diego's going to give the report from our Superintendent Student Advisory Council. However, I did want to add, on the recognition of Mr. Tim Bisson, he is one of the most amazing teachers and people I have ever met. I only had the pleasure of being in his class for one semester. I wish I could have been in it for longer, but I had to switch over to civics. But he just, he's the kind of teacher you meet and you never forget, and I really wish him well in his retirement. He tells us all about his plans to go lay on the beach and relax, and I can't wait for him to do that. So, he's amazing.
Thank you, Diego.
Thank you, Annie. Today's morning meeting for the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, one of our topics was engaging more with KSD board members, and, well, that's you. So, Dr. Pierce explained to us a little bit about what the board's role looks like, especially when it comes to hiring a superintendent, kind of delegating some of that administration. And then we also talked a little bit about the history of Annie and I's roles to the board. So, we just wanted to talk about that. And something that our students mentioned is that the students want to see you guys at our meetings. So, I know in the past, Ms. Gladhill has joined us, I think during our preliminary interviews or our second week of interviews for our new superintendent, I think we had Ms. Gladhill and Mr. Connors. Thank you, Annie, attend with us, but not, it's not a regular thing. So, hopefully in the future, we can look at perhaps assigning a board member to every meeting or kind of doing some cycle for our students to not only get to know you guys, but for you to also hear directly from the students. I know Annie and I do our best to kind of sum up that information and deliver that to you, but it's also good for you guys to see that, those discussions happening directly. to you, but it's also good for you guys to see that, those discussions happening directly. And then the students were also advocating about how valuable student voice is and just having that opportunity to connect with you as the board. So we want to have the board be more visible to our students. We also, while we were talking about that, we ended up talking about our student safety survey. So some of our students mentioned how it feels like, and they've expressed that their teachers make it seem like a requirement, I think we just have to get it done, and then so that way they can get back to their course. But we also did hear from other students that some schools are actually allotting more time in a certain class specifically to do that safety survey. So that's some information the students want to share with you guys, as well as some questions that students might not be taking as seriously, and other questions that might not be personalized to schools, in the example of students of schools who don't, that don't have athletics. So those are some comments about the safety survey. And then we were also just planning for our last meeting of the year, where we're going to go ahead and invite our new members to join us on our last day and wishing our best farewells to our current seniors. So I actually did a count earlier, fifteen of the twenty students on the Superintendent Student Advisory Council are graduating this year. So we're going to get fifteen new students in, and we're just really excited to see some new faces at our meetings, and a little bittersweet moment to say goodbye to our seniors. Another thing I wanted to touch on was just that we're going ahead, and we've already reached out to high school principals about starting to look for students, and we also have the opportunity to suggest new students for the high school principals to choose. And then more on the personal side, I've been working with Kamaiken's ATP to plan our second annual Quotronite, which will be taking place this Friday at 5:30 at Kamaiken, and you are all cordially invited. So we're just getting those things ready and preparing for that last few meetings and our last Quotronite. Any questions on that, or anything, Dr. Pierce, you may want to add?
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's great feedback, Diego. Great, great information. So if we can, I think all of us here would be happy to attend Advisory Council. I think, you know, we'd have to obviously work it around schedules, but I think we'll figure something out. So great, great feedback. Thank you. Dr. Pierce?
Okay. Diego's report reminds me that our deadline for student board representative-elect is coming up, and we all saw the great video that Annie and Diego did. So we'll, I'll get a reminder out to buildings, maybe we do one more communication push. I don't know yet if we have any applications. Those applications get submitted to the building principal, and then the building principal sends them on to me. So I don't know if you guys know of anybody.
Yeah, not yet. They're coming.
Not yet, okay, 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 good. In terms of my report, just briefly, had some great school visits to Southridge High School, Southgate Elementary, Four Seven Hills, Middle Park Middle, Highlands Middle, Kamaiken High School, and KDC, so busy couple of weeks. Also had some great events in the past couple of weeks, the Hispanic Academic Achievers Award Program, or the HAP Scholarship Events. That's an annual event that was held, and we had eight students from our school district receive scholarships. So one from Endeavor, one from Kamaiken High School, five from Kennewick High School, and one from Southridge High School who attends Delta. So that was a really great, great evening. I also got to speak at the National Junior Honor Society Induction Ceremony at Highlands Middle School. It's always a fun event, and Connie Fowle there does a great job, along with Desiree Martinez, of hosting that event, so that was very fun. And then I wanted to note that the partnership that we have formed with our Kennewick Education Association and the WEA on the residency and teaching program for recruiting and hiring and retaining special education teachers, right, that program, the, it's still contingent on state funding, and I'm still not clear right now if they received the funding that they were looking for, but they did have an initial interest meeting here at the district, and the people from WEA Art came to host the meeting, along with Rob Woodford was there, KEA president, Tony and I hold our HR director, Matt and I were able to stop in. And we had, I think, as long, as well as residents, people who are going through the program, completing the program in some other districts. So there were maybe five or six people who were there getting information and potentially interested, and there's going to be a couple more information sessions coming up, too. So hopefully, that funding will come through, and they'll be able to actually have those cohorts, because it'll be a great program. And then lastly, just two quick reminders for the board. I sent you the link to the board self-assessment survey to take in preparation for the June Fourth Retreat, so that's due May nineteenth, so that way the WASDA folks can have it and analyze it and get ready for that retreat. And then, excuse me, graduation speeches, it's still ways off, but just don't forget, due May thirtieth, so if you can send those to me, we get them included in the binders, podium binders, important.
We're going to weigh it this year.
Knowing it.
Kind of what I was thinking.
Knowing it.
It'll be all right. Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Dr. Miller?
Excited for the banquet tomorrow night, or the Academic Excellence Banquet. Should be a great opportunity, or a great event, so we're excited about that. Otherwise, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gladhill?
Okay, I don't actually have a lot to report over the last two weeks. I did have a conversation with Eric Rosain over at the Tricity Herald. He's got an upcoming article about the legislative session in education funding, and just a good little overview of that, so that was a good conversation. I attended the Orchestra Fest last week, which was wonderful. I've been able to attend that a handful of times over the past few years and enjoy being able to see the progression of the students as they move from fifth grade on through the middle school programs and onto high school. It's impressive what our students are able to learn on instruments that are not easy to play. I did participate in the financial and accountability audit Zoom call that we had last week, just an exit interview, reporting on the accountability health and the financial health of the school district, and I'm happy to report that we're doing well, so. And that's all I have. And a lot of track meets. Lots of track meets.
That's important right now for you, so, perfect. All right, Micah, you're up.
All right. I've, we visited Southgate Elementary, spent quite a while there, I saw Dr. Pierce there. We met, walked around the building, did a bunch of things, but also had lunch there. And we talked about our lunch menu coming up. As some people know, I'm working on a project, trying to make our lunches healthy, healthy as we possibly can make them, so that our kids can have the best food, to perform the best that they possibly can, so we're working on that. And then it's actually going really, really, really well. I'm really excited. We have a full menu to trial in the summer, and I feel really, really good about the foods that we have. It's, nothing's processed, it's very, very low sugar or no sugar, natural things, so it's going to be, it's going to be great, and I'm really, really excited. So I hope the pilot goes well. There's a lot that goes into it, though. It's like this big, big, big ship. It's not just getting food. There's a lot, there's a whole supply chain. There's teaching cooks how to cook, it's having the right kitchens that can handle the food, and ordering, and there's just, there's just a lot to it, and the state requirements. So we're navigating all those waters, meeting, can't tell you how many meetings I've had, how many lunches I've eaten, a lot, though, and I feel really good about it. And so just really excited that this summer, we do have a menu to feed to the kids, and really excited to see how that goes. Still working on breakfast, but lunch is dialed in, so. Not totally school-related, although I do have several, I actually coached a competitive soccer team, and we, and I have some lots of KSD kids and some other kids, and we actually went to the state championship and won this over the weekend, so it was pretty cool, pretty fun, called the President's Cup. I'm still really, really excited about that. I've also filed to run again. My first term's almost up, so congratulations to all those other people who have filed, and we're, it's kind of fun to watch, watch the numbers and the names grow on the list. Last thing is, so we have this, I mean, I don't know if everybody actually knows this, but as a board, we have this thing called the Open Public Meetings Act that we have to follow. So we, so there's a couple components to that. One is, one, like Diego mentioned, at that meeting, he had two board members at the meeting, because we can't have three, because if we have three, we have a quorum, and then there's a meeting, and there's all these rules you have to follow. So we, it's a constant, it's a constant coordination between us to make sure we have one or two members in certain places and not a quorum, so we're working on that. We also cannot speak for the, on behalf of the board when we're in a single setting. That's not our position, so we're not allowed to do that. So in regards to transparency, we have a choice. We can either just not do an interview at all, or we can, or, you know, or we can do it and speak on behalf of ourselves, because we cannot speak on the behalf of the board as a single person. So that's just a little clarification. It's not, I mean, we're trying to be as open and transparent as we can. You know, one of the things, sometimes when I hear comments, I want, I just, I want to almost stop and say, like, the comments that I'm hearing, like, they're almost like being directed at us or at me, like, as if I believe that, but I don't, so comments are kind of going by me, and they're not really sinking into my soul, because I actually agree with a lot of comments. Like, for example, I want, I want trans kids to play sports. I want them to. I think it's good for them. I mean, I believe in sports, so a speech about how it's good for trans kids to play in sports, I agree, I agree. I want, I want that, I want a solution, and I have a solution. I presented it many, many times, and so I would encourage people to try to understand a point of view. I think it's really important, when you have a discussion, to be able to articulate the other person's point of view, and if you can't do that, then you're never going to, like, be properly communicating. So I just, you know, I've said a million times, I'll say it again, I'm happy to sit down with anybody. I've asked to sit down with people in this audience before, been turned down, and I'm happy to do it, so, to where we can communicate and really, really get to understand each other, make sure I understand your point of view, and you can try to understand my point of view. So I just want to say those things, and without you.
Okay. Thank you, Micah. So a real couple of things, went to, did a visit at Sunset View, a great visit with the principal there. We walked around, we talked a lot about the school safety officer program, and some of the great things they're doing at the school. I'm not going to steal whoever's thunder that's presenting the part about discipline, because I was really impressed with their behavior response team and how that works, and so that's on here, so I'm going to leave that for that. The other thing I want to share with everyone is, and I've said this, I think, previously, but the, first off, thank you to the board and my peers on the board. We have officially visited every single school in KSD on an official, like, scheduled visit. So we've got forty-four visits, forty-four official visits at schools, and we've been to, someone has been to everyone, so I think that's important to note, that collectively we are out and about in schools, we are talking to principals, to staff, to everybody there. That doesn't include the open houses, the sporting events, the meetings, and all the extra stuff that I know everybody's been doing. So I just want to say thank you for everyone for getting out and about, even got notes on here, obviously, nutrition services, bus garage, so even auxiliary parts as well. So just thank you to the board for your commitment to visiting schools and seeing what's going on, so, thank you. All right, next up is our public hearing, Proposed Required Action Plan. Dr. Pierce, Alyssa St. Holaire will lead us through that.
Okay, so yes, Alyssa and I are going to co-present, and this is regarding our Required Action Plan, and so explain what that is here. But just so you know, we are required to conduct a public hearing to allow for comment on the proposed Required Action Plan. And so again, I'm going to, we're going to explain what all of this means right now. So I'm going to provide a brief overview of this Required Action District Program, and then Alyssa is going to share some data and the Required Action Plan priorities and components, and then I'll come back and, so we can conduct the public hearing. Okay, so Required Action District Program, or RAD, so there's quite a few acronyms here, so bear with me, but the Required Action District, or RAD, program is guided by law, and the goal is to form a partnership between the state and the local district to, the state provides funding and support aimed at closing opportunity gaps. And so the program is targeted to improve student outcomes in schools that have the lowest achievement scores. And so prior to receiving a formal RAD designation, districts receive essentially what's like pre-notice. So we received pre-notice, and we have been part of what's called a Required Introductory Cohort, or RIC. And through the RIC process, it involves an external performance audit, and so that's facilitated through OSPI, and they coordinate, they look at data, we collect data, they do an analysis, we do an analysis, and they provide funding for us, so they've given us funding this year to do planning and preparation, to develop, and be, and be ready to implement the Required Action Plan when we receive the RAD designation. So we'll get into more what all of this means, but the Required Action Plan that we put together has to be reviewed and approved by OSPI, and then it gets submitted to the State Board of Education for approval. So we've developed our action plan, we, OSPI has reviewed and approved it to say, yes, this meets the requirements of the law, and then the next step is going to go to the State Board for approval, but I don't believe yet that the State Board has actually designated, made the RAD designations yet. But we believe, based on data, and we'll explain, that we will receive the RAD designation. So essentially, they give you some money and support in a kind of a planning year to be ready to go when you're designated. And so prior to the submission to the State Board, the school board has to conduct a public hearing to allow for public comment on the proposed Required Action Plan, which is what we're presenting tonight and holding the public hearing. So I know it's a little, maybe not clear yet, but it will be clear. Alyssa's going to come, and this has to do with the state accountability framework, she's going to share some data, talk about the school particular, the data that we're talking about, and dig a little bit into the plan.
So we're going to talk a little bit about this identification framework. It's another acronym called WISF. This framework is the same framework that helped identify the schools that Dr. Pierce mentioned earlier that were getting some of the awards. It's also, all schools in identification cycles are evaluated and receive a score of either foundational supports, tier one, tier two, tier three, or tier three plus. And those scores are created from a number of categories. There's business roles and methodology. I'm going to explain a little bit of it at a really high level to show how that overall score is assigned to every single school. I wanted to note the tier three and the tier three plus levels. We talk a lot with the board about MTSS and the different tiers, and these would be the ones the state's saying need some attention in several different categories, multiple categories.
Sorry, can it, and it looks like one of the criteria is graduation rate, but we're specifically talking tonight about amissad, which.
Yeah, so this framework is for all schools. So if, so you would, could get a tier three for graduation if that was, it's an automatic tier three if your graduation rate, it doesn't meet the criteria.
Sure.
So, and we do have a couple of schools in that. So, and we do have a couple of schools in that. But you're right, tonight we're talking about a different school. Okay, so those are the tiers in the framework. This designation for Amistad is because they've met that criteria for tier three plus, which means they haven't shown improvement. And I'm going to show you in a graph what that looks like. And they've been identified as one of the lowest performing elementary schools in the state, both not just in growth, but proficiency. And they serve a high number of students in underserved groups. So this is what that looks like. These are on the OSPI report card. These are those different groups that the state is looking at and how they're performing. And these overall scores are identified during the cycles. So this was for 2024, the scores that they got. The scores are determined on growth on smarter balance, proficiency on smarter balance, how English learners are progressing on the test called WEATA. And I'll show you another breakdown in a minute. As I mentioned, there's cycles. And I wanted to note, like, Amistad has shown some improvement in this last year. This identification really is a lagging indicator. It's from the previous two years. But this last year, they showed a bump and an improvement. One other way to look at this is looking at all of the different categories. So these are based on smarter balance for third, fourth, and fifth grade. And the rules on how they calculate the score are color-coded. So we want dark blue, that shows growth. So in this last cycle and identification, they had tremendous growth, specifically in math, on the smarter balance. They had so much growth, they actually were awarded an award for closing the gaps this last year as well. So Amistad is really in a good place to benefit from this plan because they're already starting to change some things. And we're going to take that opportunity to help them and accelerate it. So this year has been what's called a Required Introductory Cohort, or a RIC year. And the state, in the grant, we were awarded $90,000 to help with this planning. We had an external and an internal audit and reviewed that. And with all of that, we were able to create a plan. It was, it's in the packet to review. That plan is the school's plan, our district's plan to support, and how we're going to use the funds that they're going to allocate to us.
Who wrote that plan?
It was in collaboration with Amistad's School Improvement Team, our Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Pierce, myself, Matt Scott.
And can you just touch on the three parts of the plan? There's the school...
Yes. So there's the Amistad School Improvement Plan, which they submit. We have what's called an LCAP, which is like our district's support plan. And then we've had to fill out what's called a budget questionnaire, how we're going to use the dollars. And I'm going to explain it a little bit more, too. So this audit criteria happened between November and December. It was a number of internal meetings to gather data. We met with some external consultants as well, and we compiled all of this data to be analyzed. Part of this process is to also bring light to how the district can better support the school. So we were looking not just at this specific school, but we were looking at mobility patterns, feeder patterns, and what supports the district in, like, in instruction, in curriculum, in professional learning we can do to help support. At the end of January, we received the external report back, and it identified three priority areas: enhancing staff, student, and family engagement, enhancing curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and really targeting support for our English learners and early literacy development. So we wrote our plan for next year, addressing these three priority areas. So what we wrote our plan for is focusing on professional development, that we're using data at the school, and we're adjusting instruction. Specifically, we want to look closely at math. That's where we need to make a lot of growth. We want to make sure we are building strong professional learning communities. There's collaboration. We also want to create a plan and help support multi-tiered systems of behavior and develop strong systems at the school. We want to look at an external bilingual program review for not just dual language, but the multilingual learners who are not in dual language at Amistad. We want to support attendance. Here's like a little bit of an example there. A lot of students are helping, older students are helping getting younger students to school. So there's sometimes attendance challenges. And with that, we want to explore with transportation, like a second chance bus route. So we take attendance in the morning, they're not there, we're calling, and we're sending another bus and getting up and getting up to school. So that's the level of creativity and support we want to give Amistad. We want to increase family engagement and also really push it to be a two-way partnership. So monthly meetings with the principals, with the counselors, to learn about supporting students and their learning, getting feedback, making sure families feel welcome at the school as well. And then we want to work on our feeder pattern a lot. We've already had a couple of meetings. Amistad, most of Amistad goes directly to Park Middle School, which goes to Kennewak High School. And as a district, that's an area we can really strengthen some consistency and routines and using the same strategies, getting to know those kids as well. So that's the broad overview of the action plan. Let's see. With that plan, we are proposing to the state around $500,000 of support. Two of those items are to support some staff to help with this, a school improvement coordinator, and staying focused on math and MTSS, and having a specialist to focus on those. Those would be primarily to help support Amistad, but they can also have some flex to help with district systems as well, if it's the district systems that needs to help, right?
Can you shed a little light on the math specialists? I don't doubt that they need it, but that was the area where they showed significant growth this last year? But ELA didn't experience that same type of growth?
So part of that was, we're still in implementation with Clear Math, and we didn't want to pull that support off right now. We like the growth we're seeing, and we think we need to continue to really help our teachers with it and continue. We think in probably two, three years, that's going to be systemic.
And what is our, I know we're making the request for 500,000. Is there, can we make a request for more?
When, we've had monthly calls with the state. They actually didn't give us an amount. They said, tell us what you need. But this is, we kind of have heard we should write it to around this amount.
I'm just looking for a way to get ELA support.
Yeah, yeah.
And they will have the new CKLA materials. I mean, that's the thing, too, is like, from a district, we're also looking at, not district-wide, that support for implementation of the new materials. So they'll be benefiting from that.
From the district.
Yeah, for sure. The other two items there is, an area of growth for our district is working on data visualization, so we can quickly respond and see how things are moving and where we're seeing growth, where we're not. And we can spend less time crunching the numbers and more time, like, responding to it. So we have a tool that we want to purchase with these funds.
And I'll just add to that a little bit. So we have so much data as a system. And what we don't have right now, we've got a student information system that houses some of the data on attendance and discipline incidents. And then there's the STAR assessment, and there's data that lives in that STAR system. And then we've got state assessment data. And it doesn't all live in one system that is, so what happens today is that people have to download lots of spreadsheets from different systems and create pivot tables and try to figure out, how do I pull all this data and then analyze it to make sense of it so I can make good decisions? And so this tool brings it all into like a warehouse, like all of this different data, and very quickly and easily lets you plop different data points together and gives you graphs and charts and makes it much more actionable and much less labor-intensive trying to bring these spreadsheets together.
And will this be only at Amistad?
No, it's for the whole district.
Okay.
And we're hoping, actually, the next board meeting...
To have some examples.
We can show you some snapshots or...
With our spring start.
Yeah, with the data that we're going to present. So no, this will be district-wide.
And so principals would receive training on this, and then when that's set, then teachers would start getting training on it as well. That's the real broad overview of that plan. This is, one thing that's hard with this money is it will go away in three years. We know, and right now, we write it year to year. We can't commit, they won't give us the three years. So we have to write it, and then next year, we'll ask again, and we'll ask again. So it's money that we want to use well, but we also, like, these positions, we know, and going in, that they are only through the life of the grant.
Yeah, it's important to note because, you know...
Yes, yes.
And I know the people that you hire will know that as well. And then in the three years, it will get paid, and then fired.
Questions?
Are we moving into the, I just, does anybody have any questions?
Oh, I mean, I had a number of things. I took a lot of time to look at the school improvement plan, and so I just, I'm not familiar enough with the format of the public hearing to know and to make comments or ask questions about the plan itself.
Well, board should do that probably pre-public hearing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's for the public if they want to comment.
Yeah. So we're open mic.
Because in this, it has the board commenting questions after the public hearing.
Open mic before we get into the public hearing.
Well, I left my notes at home, so my son had to take a picture of it and send it to me. It's not going to be the most organized, but, okay, you already kind of addressed. Okay, so looking over the plan, something that was highlighted over and over and over again was the community engagement portion of it. Which of these things that we are hiring for are addressing the community engagement?
Well, I would say the school improvement coordinator and the principal and the team there.
So the principal and team are already there? And if engagement is a problem...
We have this, and then from that district level, our district, the student family support team is aware that they're going to push in and provide different supports than they have before. It'll be in addition to.
And I would say the biggest part would be the school improvement coordinator, either taking that on or taking on other responsibilities off a plate.
So that someone else can do the engagement.
Administrator, so there's more administrator capacity to do that.
And I would like to add on that the school engagement that was highlighted is not like reading night. It's two-way communication. It's getting...
It's attending parent-teacher conferences.
Yes. It's learning about smarter balance. It's learning about what does being on grade level mean. And so really getting intentional.
And we, how do we assess the success of that? Just that we have more parents coming to parent-teacher conferences? I guess, how will we know in three years that we have better community engagement?
Yeah. Well, we should see some improvement in academic learning. Our survey data that goes to families, we should see some shifts on that. One of the things the external audit really called to is, how are you looking and after every single thing, are you collecting? So we do need to do a better job of after every single thing assessing, not just doing it.
And then there were a few things that the plan called out, like, for example, one portion of the plan pretty much attributed Amistad's poor performance to having an unequal or an unfair proportion of young teachers or inexperienced teachers. So I'm just curious, if we as a school district know that that's a vulnerability, what are we doing to make sure that we have experienced, well-prepared teachers at our lowest-performing school? You know, are there, I mean, I don't know, but that seems to be a very easy place to make some changes. If it is in fact true that low performance is coming from unprepared or inexperienced teachers, seems like we need to make an immediate change to that situation.
I mean, I think there's two ways to go. If that's the case, then one, the professional development is a huge part of that, right? There's other, you know, there's other potential things that could happen in a, like, through a collective bargaining process in the future. But like, what we can't do is just, you know, move people. And I would also say it's also...
That's irritating, right? I mean, that's, I understand. But if we're really focused on what's best for kids, and we've got teachers who are not doing the job.
And I would also say that, don't get me wrong, having experienced teachers is, you know, a good thing. And sometimes, new teachers are coming out super effective. So it's not, it's this, you know...
I actually agree with you. I'm actually playing devil's advocate a little bit because I was actually annoyed that the report was pointing out specifically that the reason that Amistad has poor performance is because of teachers. So, I mean, it explicitly says that that's what's causing it. Also called it to attention the demographics of the teachers, that that's what's adding to the poor performance as well.
I mean, I think it's, you know, when you have, I will say that the process of the external program review was a little interesting.
It's, if that's, yeah, if that's...
And that we gave a lot of data to them. And they're contractors, you know, from the state, and they...
Okay.
Which can be good to have. And then we do our own, you know, internal analysis and determination and...
Okay. That actually explains most of the things that I wrote down as being a concern of mine. So...
And I think, you know, the other thing I just really want to point out, I know we maybe were too subtle about it, but at the same time that this designation is happening, the school's being recognized for closing gaps. Because all of the good work that's been going on is making a difference. So the good news in all of this is now we're going to get some additional funding, to be able to keep that work going, and as Alyssa said, even accelerate it. And Amistad is, you know, it's a large elementary school with a very diverse student population and parent population, and we want to provide, you know, there's excellent leadership there, there's excellent work going on, and we want to be able to support that moving forward.
Okay. I got some thoughts, probably not going to be popular thoughts, but let's be honest, I mean, this isn't a positive thing.
No.
Right? So we've got to address it and get it fixed. So I would first ask, I mean, with the notations all over the document about the retention rate at Amistad, I'd like to know why teachers are leaving. Is it lack of resources and too difficult? Is it culture? Is it, like, what is the actual reason teachers are leaving? Because I'd hate to blame teachers leaving for other opportunity because it's, if it's not resources and students and staff and it's other things, so why are people leaving Amistad? There's a... There's a, I, and this is, I mean, you're probably going to be like, yeah, we can't do that, but why can't, why can't we staff that the same as student demographics? Why can't we ask our teachers and our union and our peers to help us out here? And let's match up the demographics. Let's see, let's like, let's see if that really makes an impact. So if we say in the, the document, like, students don't see people that look like them, let's do that. Let's provide that and see if that makes, makes anything better, right? Because that's often the argument across the whole thing is, as we say, students don't see people like them teaching in classes. Well, if we can make that happen, let's try and see if that actually works. And if it does, then we've got a good data point that it does work other than, you know, continually talking about it and not like being able to, to address it. So I, I don't know, I just, it's kind of outside the box, but that's, that's my thought there. I have more follow-up, I think, for the, just the whole document, but that, I don't want to take up that much time. So I'll, I'll reach out, ask some questions.
Throw devil's advocate comment in here. I actually, I actually disagree with Gabe on this one. I, I think that we need to just get the best teachers, period. And, 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 I mean, again, like you say, okay, well, this teacher is really, really, really excellent, but doesn't look like the student. So let's get the second-best teacher that looks like the student, and then let's see if that helps the student grow. I mean, is that, see, I don't know. Or maybe, maybe it's just like to appease the state, like to say, okay, state, we'll, we'll do your recommendation, even though we think it's dumb. And then, and then, but then if it doesn't work, then it's like, okay, well, we just, we did, we just did that to the kids, right? So I just think you just, you just get the best teachers, period. You don't care if they're a boy or girl, or black or white. You just, if they're good, they're good. If they're not, they're not. And if they're young, they're young. If they're old, they're old. I mean, they're just the best teachers we have. And then just teach, have the best teacher, teach, teach the kids the best they can. That's, yeah.
What does staff think about this? Not the, not the school improvement group of eight, but like, what is, what does the technology teacher think? Or what, like, what does the staff actually think about this? Do they have input? Or like, are they able to share ideas?
They, they worked as a team on the school portion of the school improvement plan. And then for the district plan, we worked with mostly the principal of Amistad. And Friday, when they got their award, we had a few people from the district building going, last, last week they had a staff meeting. So there were a few district people there to help celebrate the growth. But the whole school knows all of their school improvement goals. That, that is the work of the school improvement planning.
All right.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yep, go ahead.
So there were, there was, there were some things I didn't quite understand. I'm trying to tell you where I am. CNA data summary, it's number, item number two, says what top needs have emerged from multiple data sources. I'm curious what the data sources are, but then when it goes in to kind of answer them, point A, A, is talking about graduation rates, highlighting it and dual credit options.
There's a state template that they have, we have to use, and so we'll leave things blank, but where we're...
It doesn't look like this is blank.
Or is that the...
It looks like we filled it in as an answer to why Amistad's performing poorly, and we're talking about dual credit options and graduation rates.
I, I need to look at that part.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot in here, and that's why I was asking who wrote it. And so, yeah.
Do you have a page number?
It doesn't have a page number.
But it's the comprehensive needs assessment?
Yeah.
The CNA? Okay.
I'd also say don't leave any stone unturned. So just because it's not on this plan, we, we've got to kick the rocks around and ask questions and find out why we're at. Because have they been, like, has this been, have they ever been on this before? Has this ever been an issue? I have to, I'd have to think Westgate's probably got similar demographics and...
And in that framework, they are showing growth. So they've not had this identification.
With numbers of schools who are OSI.
Yeah.
Schools.
Office of Systems and School Improvement.
That's the WISF framework. I know we're using a lot of acronyms, but the WISF framework is, as Alyssa said, is, is used, like, every year we've got schools that get identified for levels of support. Not this level of support.
And there's just two different rubrics? Is the same agency using these two?
It's, it's all the state accountability framework.
And yes.
They have two different methods they use to evaluate them.
No.
I'm just trying to understand the difference between WISF and OSI.
WISF's a thing, OSI's a department.
Got it. So some, what department is WISF with?
It's a tool that they use.
That OSI uses?
It's, it's the framework that the state uses, and then there's different...
I know, I'm just trying to understand why we have a WISF-identified school.
I can say...
And we have some others that are OSI-identified.
So I, I can send some follow-up, but we do have some schools identified in Tier Two. Like, I can make lists.
I guess what I'm looking for is we have schools in the district that have similar demographics to Amistad but are not in the same situation.
No.
So what's different about those schools?
Yeah, and what they're doing.
Right.
Right.
What about the number of kids that have moved in lately? You know, I mean, I know, I know that for sure.
Mobility is definitely a factor.
Yeah, I mean, we've had, you know, twenty, twenty million people move into the country, and many of them don't speak English. And so then, you know, they, they moved to certain areas, neighborhoods, and then you get a influx all of a sudden of a bunch of people that, kids that don't speak the language. And I know that just, that kills scores, right? Because, so, I mean...
Well, just, so, and, so if I'm a, a student who, who's entering the system and I speak Spanish, I'm getting services at, like, I don't go to Westgate.
Where's that?
I go to Amistad in that area. So some of this has to do with mobility and patterns of where students go that, and, and why there's different demographics. Like, Westgate doesn't have English learner, Spanish, like, if I'm a newcomer to the district, for example, right, I wouldn't go to, to Westgate. If I'm a Spanish speaker.
Right.
If I'm a Spanish speaker.
Yeah. But Westgate and Amistad have, there's some criteria, and it's called EL, English Learning Progress. So regardless of what level of students coming in, we are being evaluated on how we're getting an English language development. And that's the score that is being looked at. One of them.
I think we're ready for a public hearing. You guys, let's, let's do it.
Okay. And, and I would say if any board members, you know, want to set up a, a follow-up time to dig into, to things, to dig into some of the data and better understand the WISF framework and all of that, we can set that up and, and do that. It's not a problem.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Yeah.
As I said, the requirement isn't for the, the board to approve the plan, but to conduct a public hearing to allow for comment on the required action plan. Like I said, we've already, and this, I've just got the RCW up here, we have already submitted the plan to O, OSPI for review, and they've approved that the plan's consistent. I mean, like Alyssa said, we've been working with them on a monthly basis. It's met all the guidelines and it's ready to go to get sent to the State Board of Education for approval. So this is the step to have the, the public hearing. So how the public hearing would work is, Gabe will call that to order and, and conduct it. It's kind of similar to what we do when it's, when we're conducting the public hearing for the budget.
Am I ready?
You're ready.
The public hearing on the district's proposed required action plan will now come to order. Anyone wishing to make comment on the required action plan will be given an opportunity to speak. If anyone in the audience would like to comment on the district's proposed required action plan, please raise your hand to be recognized at this time. No takers. Do we have any, oh?
You've got one.
Yep. You absolutely, come on up to the podium. Please begin by stating your name for the record.
My name is Chuck Henninger. Comment. Well, I guess I was interested in your comment that math is the area that Amistad is showing the most improvement in. But I think the problem, my, my personal opinion is that it's probably English language learning is the big issue. So I would certainly like to see the action plan. It mentioned math specifically, but I was wondering why it didn't mention more about English language learning. So that would be my comment.
Good question.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, you got it.
Please come up and...
Yeah, do it. You are here. Take advantage.
Listening to you guys was really fun because what you said, Gabe, and then what you said, Micah, was sometimes I think we fall into that binary of like, it's either or, but it can actually be both. So if the issue is, and I don't know anything about the demographics of that school, I'll put that out there upfront, but looking for, it's not necessarily, you know, representation at the cost, but what you guys showed at the start of this meeting is you have up in the eighty-eight and nineties were kids feeling safe in the schools. And I've worked in a lot of school districts, and the numbers aren't usually that high. So it sounds like you guys do have excellent staff. And if your new teachers are good and your experienced teachers are good, you know, if you have a lack of, you know, educators that have the diversity dynamics that you're looking for, then that might be a bigger problem. And I know that's a big climate issue right now in our country, but it is what it is. So like the both.
Could, could you just state your name for the record? Sorry.
Oh, yes, Tanya Beard, once again.
Thank you, Tanya. All right. Any other commenters or comments? Anyone online? No? Oh, okay. If you're listening and you have comments, please send them to us. Last call for any person who wishes to provide comment on the district's proposed required action plan. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing. It's one of you guys.
I move to adjourn the hearing.
Thank you, Brittany. We have a motion to adjourn the hearing. Patty, the roll call vote, please.
Hey, Dr. Mueller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes. All right.
And then I, just if there's any other, you know, closing comments or questions that the board has.
Oh, thank you. That looks like a massive amount of work.
Yes. Thank you to the whole team, and Matt, and Jared Lind, and Julio, and the whole staff at Amistad, you know, lots, lots of good work going into this.
The last small comment is, this is the first time we've, any of us up here have gone through this process. So I just want to make that clear. So there's lots of questions.
Yeah, and it's our first time too, so.
So, perfect.
Yeah. We're, we're all learning together, so all good.
All right.
My only last question is, did Matt actually help, or is he?
He provided ideas. All right. Moving on to reports and discussions. Matt Scott, K through 12 student goal report, all students are safe, known, and valued. And are you also doing the socio-emotional? Or, okay, so you got two of them for us.
Can I make fun be a little more?
Is this it?
This is the last one?
No.
Okay. All right. We just want to...
No, no, no.
All right.
We're a long ways from you.
Let's give everything to Matt from here on out.
All right. Well, I'm glad that a little bit earlier that people were taking my thunder because that'd help us get right back into that ten-minute timeframe that we're aiming for, for these reports. So I'm hoping that'll kind of help us out. There are two reports that I'm doing, and they are kind of connected, but they're, they're still separate because they're kind of, one's reporting some data and where we're currently at with some of our efforts, and then the other one is kind of reporting back on a board objective. So the first that we're going to talk about is our annual report, where we are looking at some of our performance indicators and coming to you. So we come every May, talk about our student survey data, because we just completed that. We talk about attendance data and exclusionary data. And we really are hoping from the presentation that you're able to, to determine if there's any particular strengths or, or areas of growth for your discussion, but also are there areas of efforts in which the board would like to see additional focus for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So as, oh, excuse me, I'm going to go back here real quick. Got too excited. So our, our goal around students being safe, known, and valued, really, our performance indicators are outlined, and that's the reason for the report is to kind of talk about these things. So we want to have greater than ninety percent of our students report they feel safe, known, and valued. And we get that information from our student survey. We want to take a look at the percentage of students who are regularly attending school, and we want that percentage to increase by at least two percent or greater each year. And then we want to look at the percentage of students who are receiving out-of-school exclusionary discipline, and we want that rate to decrease by greater than or, or equal to point-two percent each year. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that one when we get to it. So it'll be kind of three segments of the presentation that we'll talk about. So we'll start with the student survey results. So we provide a survey to our students to help the, the district and our individual schools really take a look at their areas of strength, develop a, a needs assessment, so to speak, in regards to improving the goal of having students feel safe, known, and valued. I'm, I'm glad, I wasn't part of the, the superintendent advisory committee today, but I'm looking forward to getting some of that feedback, because we always are wondering, are we asking the right questions? Do the students, how are the students perceiving the survey? But we do survey all students in grades three through twelve, so it's quite a range of students that we, that we talk to. And as we did in a previous year, we give them a uniform administration guide, particularly at elementary school. We have instructions at high school because we want there to be consistency with how the students experience the survey. Our participation rate went up a little bit this year. Our, our overall student population went up a little bit, but we have in grades three through twelve, fifteen thousand, two hundred students roughly. So we had ten thousand, three hundred seventy of those who responded to the survey. That's a response rate of sixty-eight percent. There are students who are absent on the day the survey was given. There are students who choose not to take the survey and respond to it. And so we're always striving to get more and more of our students responding, and that's why it's important to get that student feedback. There are twenty questions on the survey, but there are six in particular that we use on the metric on our performance indicator for feeling safe, known, and valued. And so those are listed here, and I won't go through them in detail, but we do take a look and want to know how students are feeling physically safe, how are they feeling emotionally safe in terms of how they're relating to their teachers and their peers, and then they are, how they're being treated at school by their peers and by adults. And so as we take a look at the results for this year, and so this is the cumulative results, grades three through twelve, what we see is what Dr. Pierce indicated in, in the beginning of the meeting, we saw some, some nice growth in regards to the students feeling as though there were adults at school that they could go to if they had an issue or a problem, or if they needed to talk, which is, we've kind of always termed that as a trusted adult, and that the adults feel, that they feel that the adults are respectful of them at school. And those both increased. We also saw, though, decreases in students indicating that they feel like they're treated with respect by other students, and that they feel safe riding the bus. And I think that that kind of goes along with some themes that we're seeing emerging from some of our survey data in regards to how just student behavior. And so that will be the second part of, of the presentation or the second report that I'm giving tonight. Trend lines are just shown here. So blue is elementary, and our elementary has, has kind of shown better increases in terms of the survey questions than our middle and our high school. Middle school students are toughest nut to crack. They just are. They are behaviorally, they are emotionally, they, they are, it's, it's interesting going through the survey results, looking at our middle schools and the comments that students make, but it also is giving us great insight as to what they're experiencing in middle school, which can help us with improvement efforts. So overall, this year, we went down a percentage point in regards to the percentage of students who, as we look at those six questions, are indicating that they agree or strongly agree with the statements around safe, known, and valued. Couple of things I want to say about the survey, just to kind of close out, is that the building teams will be digging into this. The survey closed a week and a half ago. So our, our building teams are looking into, you know, they'll be spending some time on this because we asked them to develop some student, school improvement plan goal around how they're going to impact, for example, the safety on the bus. What are the, where's the, where's the places that you feel you can have, do some improvement efforts? efforts to get students feeling better about being safe, known, and valued? So the other thing you'll notice is that the individual school or grade level results are part of the appendix to the slideshow. They're not what we're going to be talking about here, but what you will see there is you'll see some individual school scores, so you can kind of see where schools are individually. Okay. So, yeah, so I mean, part of it is making the school improvement process a little bit more transparent and something that we're digging into more with schools. So as we are seeing some of these promising practices, they are shared at principal meetings. There are opportunities for us to highlight them at different places.
Angela could give a presentation to everybody and say, hey, this is what we're doing.
Right, right. And we also have over the last three years, three years, we bring all the principals and assistant principals by level together about six times a year and focus in on these indicators. Attendance, behavior, inclusionary practices for special education students so that there's a sharing of, you know, hey, here's best practice. We're digging in and saying like what's working. I think that where you're kind of, you know, you talked a little bit, and I think that, you know, again, it's the lens I'm looking through at these survey results from is how if students are feeling like they're not safe at school or if adults are feeling like students are not behaving properly, that we don't have high expectations, like that's really something that, like, to me, that's a huge flag that we need to attack. Like, we just, we, there's, so one of the things that we're going to be talking about with our directors, the principal supervisors, we're having a day in June where we're sitting down and digging into this data, and we're really going to be talking to them about what we should be seeing, what we want to see evidence of in school improvement plans so that there can be clarity for everybody around, yeah, no, this isn't okay. If your, if your individual school data on the staff survey is saying that 35 or 40% of your staff feel like you don't have high expectations, you got to attack that.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what we're, that's how we're approaching it. So yes, there is, there is sharing of those practices, but it has been pretty historically closed-fisted a little bit. They, you know, so we're trying to get more.
Thank you. I do encourage you to do that and share it. And so, I mean, I know that we, was it last year that we kind of implemented a new sort of direction with, with, you know, discipline, you know, making sure kids understand why and do that communication piece. I'm on record saying I didn't think that was a good idea, but, but maybe we look at, is this working? And that, what's the trend? Is the trend going up? Is it going down? If it's going down, then maybe that's, we say, okay, that, this experiment, is it working? Or maybe, you know, I mean, just be aware of the data, I guess. So I know you are.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
My only suggestion is, are the schools working with the bus folks, transportation, to get ideas on how they can make or help kids feel safe? Specifically, I would assume each school probably has the same regular bus drivers? Maybe not? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Ultimately, are they working with transportation to address it?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that that's where, so one of the things that, and what we'll do is we'll make sure, I think, you know, we have, we've developed some, you know, I mean, you can see the survey results and we can link that in for, I mean, we can provide that. The survey results have comments, and sometimes the students don't necessarily understand, like you get, if they say they, for example, they ride the bus, then they're asked how they feel about being safe. They strongly agree that they're safe or disagree. And then we ask them to comment, like, tell us more about why you said you didn't agree with that. And so the comments are really helpful because there's kind of, I would break it down almost, and my review was very cursory, but I mean, I would break it down almost like in three areas. One is student behavior on the bus. Two is driver behavior on the bus because there's lots of comments about the bus driver's mean or the bus driver, you know, doesn't, isn't, doesn't talk to me or whatever. And then the third one is just kind of a misunderstanding, I think, on the part of kids sometimes about what makes constitute safety on the bus. So for example, there are comments on there about the bus is too bumpy. So they've said that, you know, so now is the bumpy because the driver isn't driving very well or is it bumpy because the road's bumpy? You know, there was comments about the bus goes too fast, you know, so we will be sharing all of that with our transportation folks and all that. But the comments are really how we dig in a little bit to see what's going on there with, and it's just sometimes, I think I mentioned it in one of the reports on the survey that, you know, we felt like this, there's a lot of students out there who, and they still do comment, say it's not safe because there's no seat belts. Because they don't understand, like, you don't put a seatbelt on a bus for various reasons. So anyway, but yeah, we take a look at those and we definitely want to dig in.
Awesome. Great. I know you're, we're moving on to the next one. Can we, let's take a quick five-minute break or shorter if everyone's back. Okay. All right, we will start back up. Mr. Scott?
All right. I think Joseph may have got the mics working. So, okay. All right. Okay. So as we're trying to talking a little bit about the behavioral aspect of things, it makes sense to kind of talk a little bit about our social emotional learning objective for this, this year. So one of the objectives we had was really tied to students feeling safe, known and valued, and it was really to conduct a program review of our social emotional learning efforts in the district. So that we can develop some uniform expectations for schools and determine measurable outcomes for assessing social emotional learning efforts. And I think this was a board interest in particular because we've come to you several times with curriculum and it's kind of like, okay, how's this stuff being used? I, I think. So one of the things we want you to consider through the process here is just are the expectations and outcomes in alignment both with policy and procedure thirty two ninety, which I'll talk about a little bit, and are they aligned to the board's direction? So, so again, we're talking about safe, known and valued tonight, and we're talking about the efforts that we did. We spent a few, a few months this year really digging into what was going on in each of our schools from a social emotional learning standpoint and figuring out how best we could provide some expectations to help us move on, on our student surveys primarily. So I want to talk a little bit about their standards, a little bit about policy and procedure, and then talk about those expectations to see if, if they're aligning with your direction. So as we look at ourselves standards, one of the things that we really want all of our folks to understand is that the, the social emotional learning standards for us are really about behavior. The standards, there's, there's six standards and three of them are about self. So that's really about self-control, self behavior, how you're controlling your behavior, your emotions, but also how are you individually being motivated and motivating yourself? How are you goal setting? How are you doing with making positive decisions and engaging in positive decision-making? How are you persevering when things get, get hard? Those are all behaviors. Likewise, in a social setting, we expect everybody to behave so that the goals of the group can be attained. So how do we, showing respect for others? How are we managing conflict that comes up within our classrooms and on our playgrounds and on our buses? And how we collaboratively or positively collaborating with each other in learning? How are we engaging in problem solving? This is about for us, behavior. Social emotional learning is about behavior. We have board policy thirty two ninety and the goal of a social emotional climate is really to promote within a school, um, both, both the environment, but also the action plans that will create and maintain a nurture and nurture a physically, emotionally and intellectually safe place for students to learn. And we have procedure thirty two ninety that really tells us what we want schools to be doing to get to there. So the process that's outlined in that procedure is really that we want every one of our schools to have a team, a school-based team that has student voice on it as it's appropriate, that is able to interact with parents and community, that is going to be there to analyze data, that is going to be able to use that data to develop and implement a plan to teach and reinforce those cell or behavioral standards. If we do that well, and if we, so, I mean, we'll kind of pick on Sunset View. If, if they're doing that well, then they're going to see improved student behavior. They're going to see improved attendance. They're going to see improved motivation and academics. And overall, that improves the school climate because teachers feel better about what they're doing. Students feel more successful with what they're doing. And that's what we're really talking about is how do we, how do we help students with behaviors to get us to that point? So as we looked at the procedure and we looked what we already had in place in terms of how we want this to go about, and as we surveyed our, every one of our schools and had them tell us what was going on, we came up with these as our uniform set of expectations. So our first expectation is really that we want all of our schools to follow the process that's outlined in procedure thirty two ninety, meaning they have a team that's looking at data, student survey data for sure, but also their family and staff data, their behavior data, their attendance data. And that's again, why that tool that Dr. Pierce spoke about is going to be so powerful moving forward to help teams really get in and look at what's going on rather than spending their time figuring out how to gather the data. We also want them to be developing and implementing a plan to teach and reinforce behavioral standards and as part of the school improvement plan in several areas, there are academic areas as well as, as behavioral areas. And then we want them to implement a plan that's based on a data-informed, multi-tiered systems of support approach. And so we're going to see a triangle again today in the next slide where we're going to talk a little bit more about that. But the other thing, expectation that we have is that our district adoptive materials will be used whenever we're doing explicit cell instruction. And so I'll talk a little bit about where that might look like as well. But those second step, purposeful people, character strong, school connect are all curriculum resources that have been adopted by, by the school district for this purpose. So when we talk about multi-tiered systems of support, just as a reminder, particularly when we're talking about behavior, we're really talking about that, that all students receive some level of instruction in regards to these standards. At tier one, where we call it universal, that's what all students would get. So that's in our classrooms, our classroom settings. That's for every student. When we think about this, we know that our goal, particularly with our, with providing that learning, is that what they get in their classroom is going to suffice for eighty to eighty-five percent of our students. And so that's really the target. We have great instruction. We have great expectations in our core classrooms to meet the needs of eighty to eighty-five percent of our students. Now, there might be ten or fifteen more percent of the students who need some additional support. And so that's where tier two comes into place and that's really targeted small group interventions. And then for another, you know, five to 10% of our students, depending on, on, on our schools, they might need more individualized supports. So all students will get some level of focus on how they develop the learning behaviors they need to develop K-12 to be successful in life. But the important thing also is that this doesn't look the same at every one of our school sites. Our, some schools, some schools have more needs within the behavioral and social emotional realm than other schools do. Largely, it's drawn along socioeconomic lines, but some schools have bigger needs than other schools do. What we don't want to do is we don't want to mandate that there's the same expectation for everybody. We still want those individual school sites to be able to determine their needs. So what does that look like in a whole class, in a whole class core instruction at tier one? So we know that there are some schools that are going to determine that, or there may be even some grade levels within all schools that determine, when I'm thinking about kindergarten and first grade, for example, that they're going to need some explicit instruction on those things, on how to behave in the classroom and in the school. We think that that explicit instruction, if it's being provided, should be up to sixty minutes per week. We shouldn't be spending ninety or a hundred twenty or, you know, a whole day every week on this piece. We have other things we want to also be focused on, but we think that there is a place for explicit instruction. And if there is place for explicit instruction, it's using our, our adopted curriculum. In the vast majority of our classrooms though, and I would say in every classroom in the district, we also integrate that behavioral instruction into the classroom. And we've all experienced this in our own classrooms where the teacher talks about the rules, how we go about passing out papers and turning in homework and what happens if we're working cooperatively and we don't agree. And all of those things happen within, and all of those are found within our social emotional learning, uh, standards. So those strategies and activities are integrated in, and I, and I don't think it's too much of a stretch to say in every single classroom across our district because that's the work the teachers do with students. So there are going to be times when there's explicit instruction given, but there is instruction in those cell standards that is given, that's integrated in classrooms all the time. An example of that would be this example from Highlands Middle School. So Kelsey Clayton's a teacher, an English language arts teacher at Highlands. And this is an example of how the cell standards have been integrated within her classroom. And this is not something that's done every day, but this is an activity that they look at, at their mid-year star testing to say, hey, am I growing the way I need to be growing? So they're looking at their data. They're looking at what their growth goal is. They're looking where they should be performing. And then they're in, engaged in a classroom activity where they're doing some reflection and they're doing some goal setting. And so again, it's, this is, this is learning behavior and this is, this is helping them. This is directly aligned to our cell standards, but this is focused on that academic work and it's helping students take ownership of their, of their learning and it's helping them understand what they need. And so this is an example of an integrated approach. And like I said, you'll see this in a lot of our classrooms throughout the school year.
So this integrated approach, which I prefer, is, is that, I mean, I don't know, do you have a sense of like how, how many are doing this integrated approach versus like the, I'm just gonna dedicate 10 minutes for this, right, for SEL? Do you have an idea?
I, my, my response to that is a hundred percent are doing an integrated approach where it's just part of naturally what you do as a classroom teacher.
Yeah.
And, and, so it's not an either or. It's like, I think everybody's doing an integrated approach. And then depending on the school and what their data shows and what the students need, they also might be doing 15 minutes of like during morning meeting is a good example at elementary school. So they do breakfast in the classroom, have a morning meeting. I saw this in kindergarten the other day and, and talk to the principal and they spend about 15 minutes four times a week, really focusing in on behaviors.
Is there some evidence?
Teaching behaviors.
Can we see that it's changing behaviors? It's working? Or do you see the upward trend or, or I guess downward trend? Maybe, I don't know, but.
Yeah. And I think that, so I think in some of those, I think in, in some of those schools, particularly in the last report, when you look at, at, at some of the, at either the student survey data that's saying like, hey, I feel like this is going really well, but the discipline data as well. And one of the things that I really wanted, I mean, again, be here to do it, but the, 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 the majors and minors piece has been brought up before in terms of this report, like saying like, hey, what's the proportion of the, the minor things that happen in classroom that take the classroom teacher and the classroom off or the major things? Where's our proportion? We don't get a good sense of that with our data collection currently because it's kind of disjointed. This new system will help us do that better and we'll be able to kind of report that out and kind of see that. But I would, I, I, it's, when I ask for specific examples about, hey, tell me where this, these efforts are showing you fruit. Sunset View was an example. Like they see decreased student behaviors because of the time that they're spending doing, helping kids and intervening and helping them learn replacement behaviors to what they're doing now. So I, you know, I think again, that's, that's data that we need to keep our eye on and probably come back and share. Because again, it's hard to tell just from exclusionary data where that's at. I think it's in that anecdotal stuff. I think, you know, like coming out of Comicon High School and Kennewick High School about students and their engagement in class without cell phones. Like, so it's hard sometimes to quantify it, but, so I guess that's kind of a terrible non-answer. Sorry about that, Mike.
I think that also goes back to the, the programs that we, or the, the data manipulation programs we're looking at. Because one of the things is, is often what we do, we're looking at is, is we're looking at second graders. And we look at second graders every year and see where they're, how they're doing. But in a lot of respects, what we actually want is longitudinal studies, studies that follow the same cohort over a longitudinal period to see if they're changing, if, if they're actually, if, if that cohort is actually changing their behavior. And so I, I think to your point, I think that's a, Mike, to your point, I think it's great that we see our, are these programs, are we seeing behavioral changes? And the best way to do that will be being able to manipulate in a longitudinal fashion.
And I think part of it is also in, in being very explicit about these expectations. So that again, it's, you know, everybody is, everybody's focused in on the same thing because I know that you have, my hunch is that you have conversations with some teachers say, oh yeah, I don't do anything with social emotional learning. Well, they looked at those standards, they would say, oh no, well, actually I do. I do this in my class. I mean, and so it's a kind of building that understanding again about what we're maybe unconsciously doing and then collecting good data about that impact.
That's what I was just gonna ask. So part of these uniform expectations where every school is now forming a team, are we going to see improvement on the data being recorded? Because that was a very big theme from all of my school visits last year was that almost no one, almost no one was recording the behavior.
Little Johnny's been to the office 15 times.
Yeah, but they weren't putting it in Swiss.
Right.
So there was no way to pull the data or to be able to support. So.
Yeah.
So I mean, the data's great, but it's only as good as.
As good as the input.
Exactly, exactly.
So we need, part of that team needs to be.
That's a really important thing, Matt, is getting, make sure the teachers are.
So again, going back to that procedure, I mean, that's an expectation that's outlined in procedure is that analyzing data. We have to give them the right tools to use to both input and manage that data. And then we have to have the expectation that it's being done.
Well, they do have the right tools, right? The right tools are there.
I mean, if, if it's difficult to access though, hopefully, I mean, this data visualization tool, I mean, if you can see the value of putting the data in, then maybe data in is better. I don't know.
How many?
I just know that's a challenge right now.
Yes, it is.
Teachers help us out.
Elementary student in, obviously K through five, how many times do they do, how many times do they do PE a week? And how long is it?
They do PE, they do PE, well, it depends on the, the school and the number of sections. I believe they do PE twice a week.
And music and library, music.
I think it's one, once a week.
I think specials, they'll, it's a rotation.
So they might be, well, see, so I'm speaking from a few years ago as a principal. So I do think we added technology into the rotation. So I think it's technology, music, PE and library.
And then they probably don't have, I'm assuming they don't do specials every day, right? Wednesdays potentially may not do specials because it's a short day.
Potentially.
How, how long are the special, how long are those specials? You, 45 minutes?
Forty or fifty. They're forty or fifty depending on the size of the school.
Okay.
But it's the same amount of minutes total, but it's just like the frequency of the class.
And I just ask only because, to put it in this context, 60 minutes per week, SEL, we're doing less technology, less music construction, potentially less PE, less special classes. So, so when you think about some of those other auxiliary, I guess, class things we do, PE, music, those things, it would be less, we're, their kids are getting less of that. And we're filling it in. So I'm just adding some time clocks.
Right, right.
But can I bring up just one thing? Can you go back to our slide with the cell standards? I, I guess what, you know, we talk so much and the board talks so much about behavior and what we need to have high expectations of kids for behavior and holding kids accountable for behavior. And I don't disagree. And we have to teach kids. And we have to teach kids, I mean, any parent knows, right? You, you can't, you gotta teach kids what you expect from them and then expect it from them. But if we don't teach them, how are they gonna learn it? So it's like not, if there's a need, if, 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 if you, we hear from teachers that like behavior is a struggle, then we gotta carve the time out to teach the kids the behavior expectations. So yeah, I would, would I say, yeah, it's just as important? And that's why it's like, usually it's a younger grades. It's not like we're doing that at high school, right? But like, if they don't learn it, if they're not taught in at elementary, they're not gonna be able to demonstrate.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just, I'm just putting it into context.
Yeah, yeah.
Our kid, or some of our kids are getting less potential than, than a behavior discussion on top of, all of our teachers are doing interactive data, like constant.
Yeah.
Promote promotions. So it's just context.
But, but I, I think part of that though also is, is to, to, to Dr. Pierce's point, you know, we, we talk about discipline and wanting to make sure we've got discipline and, and want to improve behaviors and improve attendance. All of those things are fundamentally rooted in what we're talking about here in social emotional learning is how, how well do they understand these basic behaviors? How do they understand how to deal with difficulty? How to deal with conflict? How to collaborate? How to, so, you know, to me, yes, you may spend more time, especially in the lower levels than they do with PE, but, but I guess I have no problems with that. Why? Because if we can actually have our kids understand these basic skills, they're gonna be far more successful. We're gonna have far less disciplinary issues. We're gonna, they're going to be able to focus better because they understand what they're doing. They understand how to persevere, how to deal with conflict, how to deal with difficulty. And so I think if we keep big picture, this is like, like is being said, yeah, you're not spending quite as much time as you get into high school, but certainly in the foundational years, I, I would probably make an argument. We've talked about if kids can't read by the age of, by the third grade, we see significantly decreased results in the higher grades. I'm guessing, but I would suggest that kids who don't have a high social emotional IQ, for lack of better phrase, probably do just as poorly or worse because they're going to struggle with some of the fundamental foundations. And so that's why, yeah, I think this is great. The, the one thing I, I would say is, is we just, to add points that have been made, we need to know the data so we can, we can actually see, are we doing what we think we're doing? And that way we can make better decisions. And that way we can make better decisions in the future.
And I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I, the only context I'm adding to it is so.
Yeah, people can visually understand how much time.
This is what we're doing. Schools do, do what's best for your school and do that, but just from a visual perspective, that's.
Yeah. And, and some kids, I think to the point that's being made, some schools will need less.
Right.
Often because perhaps in their homes or in other places, they're getting these lessons. And then other schools will definitely need more, but, but I think this is probably the most effective way to begin. Discipline is great, but if the kid doesn't even know what he's doing wrong, discipline doesn't work as well.
Honestly, it's different from grade to grade.
Yeah.
There's some schools where you just.
Yeah.
Grade to grade, school to school.
More problematic.
Right, and we wanted to make sure that within these expectations that there was flexibility to meet those needs. But we also want to make sure that we have real clear understanding about like, okay, so where is that happening? And how is it happening each of our sites? So that we can do exactly that. Keep, you know, keep an eye on what, what's the impact of that. When we look at that tier two targeted again, I'm, this is a smaller group of students, but examples of what we would be doing around social emotional learning behavior is really, you know, kind of outlined. These are just a handful of things that schools are putting into place. So individual students might be getting a check-in, check-out, meaning they're talking with, or groups of students are talking with a counselor or a teacher at the beginning of the day. You know, what are we working on today? How, you know, what are you gonna do to be successful checking out at the end of the day? How would, how did it go? Small group counselor-led sessions, we do things with behavior plans, behavior teams. We also offer academic supports and accommodations to students to help them in terms of their intervention. Again, smaller targeted group of students. It's not what every student's going to experience in our schools, but, but some students, based on their needs, may, may get that. And then individualized intensive interventions at tier three, again, are, are really where we would probably be calling some, sometimes on outside resources. We've got our student assistance professionals through the SD that are meeting with students. We work with external professionals, wraparound services, our counselors, and we've got Gaggle Mental Health. So those are examples of where we would get students really intensive supports. We develop individualized student success plans, behavior improvement plans. Depending on the school, they're kind of called different things, but they're all about the same thing, which is these are the behaviors we're trying to develop a better sense in the student of being able to replace with, with, with better behaviors. Behaviors that don't interfere with their learning or the learning of other students. And we do functional behavior assessments because behavior always has a function. And so I think that we want to know what is the function of that behavior? Because that's when you can start applying some interventions that are gonna be supportive of it. Visual schedules and supports are other examples of them. So as we went through and we kind of said, okay, this is kind of the baseline start of having us have some uniform expectations that our principals, supervisors, our principals, teaching and learning, everybody can be focused and supportive of. And then we kind of got into the discussion about measurable outcomes. And the, and the good news really is that we already have them. I mean, we, we have the outcomes already indicated with our key performance indicators. If we're effective, we're going to see improved discipline. We're gonna see decreases in major and minor incidents. But more importantly, we're gonna see decreases in that behavior with certain kids. We're never gonna extinguish it altogether. There's always going to be behavior at school that happens because it just does. I mean, fights occur because people get together in a, in an area and they, you know. But by the same token, if we can improve those things that are really impactful, particularly in the classroom, that's what we want to do. Improving attendance, again, if we're, if we're, students are getting their needs met better at school and if they're feeling more successful, attendance will go up. The results will show in our student and our staff and our family surveys because people will be feeling like, yeah, the product we're, we're getting with our students is better. And then we're gonna see improved academic growth and proficiency. Because if we don't have students who can manage their behavior in the classroom, that learning really comes secondary for those students. And so we're gonna improve that. So we already have the outcomes. We don't need to create new outcomes for social emotional learning. We have them here and so that would be, that's really how we would approach taking a look at, at measuring these expectations in the future.
I just have one quick question.
Go ahead, Brittany.
So Matt, just how, how are we making sure that the tier two and tier three interventions are not interfering with academic instruction?
It's a good question. I think that there are oftentimes, I think number one, I mean, our expectation, and I mean, it's not necessarily this to here, is it? Our expectation is that there's a partnership with family in regards to the students needing some supports. So there should be a discussion about where should these supports happen? Oftentimes those supports happen at lunchtime. They, they happen at times when there is an instruction that's happening. But if a student's really having a hard time and they're blowing out of math class because they hate math and blah, blah, blah. I mean, kind of tends to stand reason like, okay, we're gonna get them out of there for a while, build some skills and then get them back. So I, I, I know that the schools are very cautious about losing instructional time. And they weigh it, you know, I mean, but it, sometimes it has to happen with those tier two and tier three students just because that's the only time of the day we can really grab them. So they might see their student assistance professional, for example, at, at, at Horse Heaven Hills. They might see them at a, a time where the team has said, this is the least impactful for the student.
And I guess I, I know you're aware of this, but I just wanna say it. I just wanna make sure we're not recording things differently to get different results, right? That we're just honest and record everything honestly to get the true nation.
Great. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along to finish up, we have no unfinished business. We do have new business, Resolution 10, WASDA Model Policy and Procedure Development, Resolution 11, Delegating Authority to the WIAA. Resolution 12, Concerns and Reservations Regarding Continued Delegation to WIAA.
Okay, so here is the Resolution 10 that the board is considering.
Okay. I will, I'll kick it off just to kind of give some background. So this resolution is for, to sign on as one of, at a minimum, five school districts to propose a bylaw change to WASDA's policies. Currently, I'm sure you guys are aware, legislator passes the buck to WASDA and then WASDA gets to create all these policies that we have to follow. That's done in-house by whoever does it at WASDA. There's, there's really no process for public comment. There's no process for school directors to input their, their information or their agreements or disagreements. So this, this proposal here is essentially from Linden. So Linden's taking the lead on collecting all these resolutions and submitting them to WASDA for essentially a vote in the General Assembly in September. So we essentially are just signing on to ensure there's a, a policy in place as they develop these procedures that are being pushed out to all the school districts, that we have a voice at the, the table with, with that policy. And there's a defined process for timeline, comment, all those things, so.
Yeah, allows, allows the, the districts and the people to actually get some information to WASDA rather than always a top-down dictation constantly. It's like now it's we, the people can actually communicate with WASDA and get something across rather than we're just taking orders from them all the time, like do this, do this, do this, with no input from anybody.
Well, particularly because WASDA's, the people that are writing some of these model policies are not elected officials. They're.
Not like.
That's what I find frustrating is, is they're not elected, often we don't even know who they are. They hide behind a screen of.
They're not in touch with the districts.
Yeah, yeah. So, no.
So if this, this, I will say this resolution is exactly carbon copy of Linden's. So all the school districts that sign on, it has to be the same resolution, so none of the wording's changed. But if there's no concern with it or the wording, I will take a motion to approve this resolution, which will then be sent to Linden for collection and they'll, they'll submit it.
I'll make that motion, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 10, WASDA Model Policy and Procedure Development for first and second reading.
Great. We have a motion. Patty, if you can call for the roll call vote and.
Annie Maltoth?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes 4-0. Next up is the delegating authority to WIAA. You have.
Yes, so this is the resolution form that WIAA provides and the one that the board historically approves at this meeting every year in May.
This is just the one that says that we delegate our authority to the WIAA.
Yep, and it's a.
That's correct.
It's a standard form, it's not editable, anything like that, right?
Yeah, it's just a standard form with, you know, that we plug in our school district name and that kind of thing. And so this is the form that the board receives and historically approves and we send it along to WIAA.
Okay. So obviously there's a second part to this, which is the next one, but this is the the WIAA official resolution form. So any questions on this one? If not, I will take a motion to, to approve this form.
I can make a motion to approve the.
That's why I didn't do it, because let's.
WIAA School Board Resolution Number 11.
Perfect. All right, we've got a motion, we'll do a roll call vote.
Annie Maltoth?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
You almost went on that one.
I.
We're thinking about it.
I did. Okay.
Okay, and then this is Resolution Number 12.
Yes, so Resolution 12, so this is, since there was no way to amend or add to the WIAA resolution, this resolution just shares the concerns and reservations about delegating to WIAA. It doesn't say that we're not doing it, it just shares that. I guess I'll back up. You guys are aware of the situation with WIAA and they were supposed to vote on Amendment 7 and 8 and they were bullied by the superintendent prior to that. And then they decided to change it to an advisory vote instead of actually holding a real vote. And so they just kind of, I don't know, just kind of hidden a corner and didn't do anything. It's, it's extremely frustrating that the, that the superintendent came out with his statement, his letter before the vote because who knows how many potential votes that changed? One was one vote away from passing, so who knows how many votes that changed, moving it from an advisory vote versus a regular vote. So ultimately this resol, resolution just says that WIAA may not be directly responsible for those external actions. Its silence and failure to defend the integrity of the process on behalf of its member schools was unacceptable. So yes, we've passed resolution, but this just defines a little bit on the, on the concern for, for their process. Any questions there?
I don't know.
So there are, so, so to, this, this was a discuss, a discussion with a couple other, some of those school boards previously. There was a question about kind of what that coalition is. Linden Blaine, Brewster, Cashmere, Colville, Lake Shalan, Mansfield, Mead, Central Valley, Okanagan, Omak, Orville, Tenasket, Moses Lake, Thorpe. I mean, it's basically.
It's an actual established coalition?
It's. It's, it's a group of board members, yeah.
Yeah, I can explain that, just to, you know, we had a question about that. So, yeah, there's just a, a number of board members. It, it started a couple years ago at WASDA where actually Chris, that was actually Chris Reitl's idea where he, he said that we should start a, like a caucus, basically. And so we did, we did, that was actually Reitl's. So, so we just sort of kind of, it was just a matter of just talking to board members and then kind of like, uh, we signed a president and just kind of followed the caucus procedures and, and then, and now it's like a, it's like a monthly Zoom call where, where board members will get on and they'll talk about, they'll have topics and agendas and things like that. And they talk about different things, like this Title IX has been, had been a heavy topic as of lately. I jump on sometimes, some of that don't, probably make, probably one out of every five meetings or something. But anyway, that's, that's what it is, just a, it's a group of people and they're from a variety of boards across the state. None of them have more than two members. Most of them just have one, one or two, but yeah, so it's just a, I'm just to answer that question from earlier.
So, just to be clear, it doesn't change anything. It's just telling WIAA that we were opposed to what they're, them not being transparent, not being willing to take votes that people are.
Yep.
Asking for.
Yep. It's still delegated to them, but this just, yep.
First stance for the community to know.
The, the only thing that gives me pause is just the last sentence that says, hold on, where does it start? It starts somewhere, but the continued, yeah, the continued delegation to WIAA will depend on WIAA's willingness to revise its policies, et cetera. The, the, that sentence right there is the only thing that gives me pause about this resolution is because I just know, just being, maintaining my own integrity, I, I would never would have put us in a position where we weren't partnering with WIAA even if they don't agree.
Actually, so if.
Well, I'm not gonna do the tender.
Let's just put it that way, if our federal funding was in jeopardy, I actually would have to have a long, serious thought about whether I, because if, if our federal funding's in jeopardy, if the federal, if the federal government says, look, you will not receive federal funding if you follow WIAA's rules, then all of a sudden I'm, I'm forced to say, wait a second, I have to reevaluate and figure out which one we're gonna go with.
I know, but stepping away from WIAA takes our entire school district out of.
What if, what if another organization came in play and?
There's somebody what is.
I know.
It just, it just opens the door.
My vote on like the statement we're making.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying that I wouldn't make the statement, hey, WIAA, unless you change things. I'm not gonna delegate my authority to you. Everything else I'm on board with, but that's the only part that I'm just telling you, I wouldn't, I would not have voted to take us away from WIAA.
I, I think that would be, I mean, same here, highly unlikely. There, there are only a few select scenarios where I would suddenly say, wait a second, I can't put our kids at risk. Like I said, if we took our federal funding away, some of these schools we've talked about today would be devastated. Not that either, I mean, let's be honest, neither of those scenarios are gonna happen because they'll find a resolution. People will figure this out. People, we're not the decision makers, we're a school board, not a federal or state policymaker. So.
Yeah. So.
And we will continue to comply with the laws.
Yep, I agree. Would I take a vote?
The floor's, the floor's open, so if you want to or if you wanna.
I'm.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution, Resolution Number 12, Concerns and Reservations Regarding Continued Delegation to WIAA for, for second reading approval.
Patty, we have a motion, if you'll do the roll, roll call vote, please.
Annie Maltoth?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Gladhill?
abstain.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
All right, motion carries 3-0. Up next is our next meeting agenda, preliminary budget, 25, 26, capital projects update, 10-year capital facilities plan, K through 12 student growth and proficiency targets, financial literacy and high school schedule recommendation, partial credit policy.
Just a light agenda.
It's just a light agenda, all right? We have no other businesses authorized by law, we will adjourn the meeting.